Good evening, welcome to the special meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It's 5:33 on Tuesday, April 11th. Roll call Michelle, please.
Councilwoman Oller, Councilman Azar, Councilwoman Crossen, Councilman Devon, Councilman Elliott, Councilman Garrison, Councilman Morris, Councilman Nasser, Councilman Nation. Six are present, three are absent.
Thank you. The purpose of this special meeting is for a presentation by the Wabash Valley Riverscape to update the council on the projects. So if there's a petition or speak on this? Thank you. Please introduce your name for the record.
Happy to do that. I'm Charlie Williams. I'm the president of Wabash River Development and Beautification Incorporated, also known as Riverscape. We're thrilled with your interest in Riverscape and its progress, and so thank you very much. We've been at the Riverscape Plan for a little bit over a decade. We're trying on a daily basis to work that plan and happy to share our progress with you this evening. To do that, I've asked Vice President and Minister of Information Fred Nation to share because we're challenged to share with you a decade of progress in the time we have together. But let me introduce Fred Nation, and I hope you'll be pleased.
Thank you, Charlie, and thank you to the members of the Terre Haute City Council for hearing our story and for giving us some time to do that here this evening. And especially I want to thank President Nasser for extending invitation to us on behalf of all the other members. And we hope that what we provide you tonight is interesting and will help you understand better not only what Riverscape is, what we've accomplished, and what the future may hold. You know, somewhere, perhaps here in City Hall, I've never been in the basement of the City Hall, and it may be something like this. Somewhere, there's a bookshelf full of dusty plans for the betterment of Terre Haute and Vigo County. We paid a lot for those plans, and some resulted in good things. There is one plan that is not on the shelf, though. That's the Riverscape Plan, our bible prepared nine years ago and which we follow pretty about every day to help improve the quality of place, our place, our city, our Terre Haute, Indiana, and Vigo County. Tonight, we want to report to you what we have accomplished in our first decade and what we are working on. Let's start with yesterday. Several of you were present at the groundbreaking of Riverfront Lofts, a $26 million adaptive reuse of an old factory building into 166 market-rate apartments, not student apartments, mind you, right on our Wabash Riverfront. This happened because a then-new President, Dan Bradley, decided to change the expansion direction of the ISU campus west to the river in 2008 when the Riverscape Plan was developed. This is the first leg, this western leg, this ISU part here, north of Cherry, between the river and Third Street, of what we call our three-legged Riverscape stool. ISU started buying vacant and decaying property west of Third Street to the river. With the help of Max and Jackie Gibson, we now have a tract and field complex second to none in the United States. Rooming behind it is the American Can Building, constructed in 1930 to serve the now-vanished food and brewery industry here in Terre Haute. Then, from 1965 to mid-'80s, Pillsbury operated, followed by Icon, a warehousing operation that most people is known as the Icon Building today. Few outside of Riverscape believe the building had a future, but we brought John Watson and Core Redevelopment to look at it four years ago, in fact, just a little over four years and a month ago. He said yes, he was very interested, but he wanted to know more about the other project we talked to him about, and that was the Deming. So he went and looked at that and said he'll do that first, and he did, investing millions in 105 market-rate apartments. Thanks to the City Council, Mayor Bennett, and Terre Haute Redevelopment, both of these properties are being adapted for reuse for our city, for our future, and they're on the property tax rules. And inspired by the actions of ISU and Riverscape Vision, work is now underway on a student housing project on the side of the former Boys and Girls Club, Annex 41, an investment of about $25 million, helped by actions of the mayor, the city council, and the Department of Redevelopment. Again, you all know they're going to be paying taxes. ISU has extended the Heritage Trail from Fourth and Tippertonou to the Riverside Lofts and along the river, south to First and Cherry. Riverscape is working with the city and ISU to find the best way from there to the Fairbanks Park Trail and also westward across the river to Wabashiki. We also envision a trail north from the Riverside Lofts along the route of the Wabash and Erie Canal along our First Street, all the way to the side of Historic Ford Harrison. A Riverscape Committee has worked with Dr. Reddy at the landing to find a proper way to recognize the historic location connected with two presidents, William Henry Harrison and Zachary Taylor. Also, our efforts inspired Dr. Reddy to clear the side of the Irman Pavilions built in the early 1900s to help celebrate the centennial of Terre Haute and Vigo County. You see them there in their current condition. Plans are underway to reconstruct them, and now the site is being used by the Terre Haute Crew as a boat launch and dock for their crew club program on the Wabash, another activity for our youth and something that will bring regional crew regattas, heads and beds, restaurant visits, to Terre Haute. During the next decade, this west side of Terre Haute, from Third Street to the river, will dramatically change, no doubt, and have renewed life, thanks in part to the vision of Riverscape. West of the courthouse, City Hall complex, Art Spaces has planned turn to the river, renewing the city-county parking lot, extending Wabash Avenue by pedestrian promenade to the side of the former Wabash Avenue Bridge, where a gathering area and a river overlook will be constructed, adding to the city-county complex with plans for revamped parking lot, which might be a gathering place, maybe something like the new place for the farmer's market. Across the river, on the National Road, is the largest accomplishment of the Riverscape vision, the Wabashiki Fish and Wildlife Area, co-managed by the Vigo County Parks Department and the Indiana Department of Natural Resources. This is the second leg of our three-legged stool, and the one that we've actually spent most of our time and efforts on. Wabashiki was created with no local tax monies, entirely financed at a cost of $7 million through fees and resources of the IDNR, supplemented by generous support from organizations like the Heritage Trust, the Nature Conservancy, Ducks Unlimited, Wild Turkey Federation, Wabash Valley Community Foundation, and other donors. It comprises more than 7,000 acres of land and water, and its success inspired then-Governor Mitch Daniels to form the Healthy Rivers Initiative and fund it to eventually extend Wabashiki to 43,000 acres, from Park to Sullivan Counties, headquartered here in Terre Haute, the queen city of the Wabash. And you may know that Brendan Kearns is the contractor for the Healthy Rivers Initiative in this area and has acquired several, you know, I don't know the number, but it's getting into the thousands of additional acres for the Healthy Rivers Initiative, which is funded along with the Muscatetuck Initiative at $30 million for land acquisition. It has become, the Wabashiki, it has become a haven for bald eagle watching, as well as a home of many other bird species using the migratory flyway of the Wabash, as well as hundreds of deer and other animals. And most importantly, it is contributing to the continual cleaning of our river, making it more attractive to more species of sport fish and a restoration of the depleted mussel population. Wabashiki is growing as an ecotourist location for bird watchers and is projected to increase over the years immensely. Thanks to the late Susie Dewey, the Wabash Valley Community Foundation, and Vigo Parks, among others, we now have Dewey Point at the east edge of west Terre Haute, with excellent overlooks of the wetlands, a pavilion, restaurants, and IDNR sign-in kiosk for hunters. Vice President Mike Pence, then-Governor, honored Susie Dewey with the Sagamore of the Wabash for her role in creating this spot. Wabashiki contains more than 10 miles of trails which connect to the Levy Trail around west Terre Haute, creating one of the best running spots in the Midwest, thanks to the foresight and planning of, among others, the late ISU Coach John McNichols. Coach McNichols and two Terre Haute city government representatives visited Eugene, Oregon, and Boise, Idaho, and came back inspired to make Terre Haute cross-country town USA, with Wabashiki Trails playing an important future role. Each year, ISU contributes $25,000 toward the upkeep of the trails in Wabashiki maintained by the Vigo County Parks. One of Riverscape's most impactful works in progress is the conversion of the former settlement of Dresser-Taylormville into a passive nature park, which will be the gateway to Wabashiki. Thanks to the efforts of Vigo County, FEMA, West Central Indiana Economic Development District, and Riverscape, all but about 10 families have been relocated from Dresser, and a large percentage of the land, that's all that land in black there, has been acquired. All of this is in a floodway, and no construction is allowed. It is government policy to relocate residents out of areas which frequently flood. Last year, Riverscape and Vigo County Parks competed for and received a bicentennial Nature Trust grant of $120,000 matched by Riverscape to acquire about 90 lots. This included the purchase and removal of a former auto salvage yard near the National Road at the west edge of Dresser. You're looking at where that used to be, right visible, it used to be visible from Highway 40 there. Again, few, including ourselves, really believe this auto salvage yard could be eliminated, especially this soon, but we accomplished it. Last year, we received a $10,000 grant from Lowe's Foundation, that's Lowe's Hardware Store, to construct a small parking lot to serve as a starting point for the Ag Levy Trail South at Dresser. With the help of Vigo Parks and ISU, it is now in service. It's the first step toward building overlooks along the western riverfront. Now, those ought to be a good place to watch the 4th of July fireworks. And this, you're looking at landscape architects' depiction of what that might look like. It's also designed in the same way that the parking lot is, and this is one of the things that Riverscape is doing, with Dewey Point, with the parking lot, with this, and some more you'll be seeing is, we're hiring experts to do things right, to design things right, so they'll last for a long time, be serviceable, and be aesthetically pleasing. We hope during the next year to acquire most of the remaining Dresser parcels and begin the conversion to a planned passive park, including tree, wildflower, and grass plantings, and utilize the riverbank with its views of Terre Haute as a picnic area. Now, you've heard about Dewey Point in Dresser. The missing link is a way for pedestrians, bicyclists, and runners to move safely along the mile separating the two, along the grade, the missing link between west Terre Haute and Terre Haute. Approximately 35 people a day walk that grade, mostly to get to work or to go to stores. They don't have cars, whatever, something like, pushing grocery carts, riding bikes, for simple transportation. It's a safety hazard. We have a plan, an elevated connector adjacent to the south side of the National Road grade. It comes with a big price tag, about $3 million. Our legislative delegation, that is our state legislative delegation, is working on this, as well as our congressional delegation. Projects like this take time, but it'll happen, just like the Icon Building happened, just like Dresser is happening. Another major project is a St. Mary, St. Mother Theodore Trail connecting Terre Haute with St. Mary of the Woods College and the Sisters of Providence. This will be part of the Heritage Trail and connect with three of our local colleges and universities together, St. Mary's and ISU. That trail could go this way, come across the river bridge, go up this way, and you get to St. Mary's that way. It could also end up going through west Terre Haute and coming back up this way. But one way or another, we will get that done. One note, the land on the south side of the National Road at Dresser belongs to the city of Terre Haute. This is not a picture of that, but I don't have a picture of that, but it's next door to that, having once been Paul Dresser Park from the 1920s until the 1980s. Right south of it is the Amvetts Post, formerly the Kermin Grotto. Riverscape is working closely with Amvetts in ways to improve the outside of their property and utilizing the former park to make this area an attractive interest to Terre Haute from the west. Now, we've covered two of the three legs of the Riverscape stool. The third is the most challenging and the one we have spent the least time on, the least resources on up to now, the southwest industrial corridor. And that is all of this, this area down through here, all of this, from Fairbanks Park south. This is partly here, the former Western Tar, this is the IP property, and up here, of course, is a commercial solvents property, or further north up there. This spans the area from Fairbanks Park to right beyond I-70. This was Terre Haute's industrial heart for a century with commercial solvents, western paper. By the way, those aren't buildings there, those are stacks of straw. The paper company used to make cardboard from straw before they shifted to pulpwood. Some of you may remember that because it used to smell like wet straw down there a lot. And of course, Western Tar, which was a Creosoting headquarters in the Midwest where railroad ties and all. All these companies provided thousands of jobs over the years. It was also part of what gave Terre Haute its reputation for smell, disturbing to some the smell of jobs and money to others. Because of changing times and technology, those jobs and plants are gone, and they're coming back here. And if they come back, many of them come back, they're going to go to the industrial park south, not to this area. And they're leaving Terre Haute, though, with an opportunity to reuse these properties for the 21st century. If we do nothing, they will either sit and decay, or we'd be parceled out with uses beneath the possibilities this land holds. The Riverscape Plan envisioned some of this land used for parks, recreation, green space, some for commercial, retail, and housing. Again, our community has its share of doubters, not believing that we, as a community, can make this vision come true. Some of those people didn't believe Dresser could be transformed, or the Wabashiki would ever happen, or that the only use for the Icon Building was a landfill. All three of these properties, Commercial Solvents, International Paper, Western Tar, are either available or will be soon. With the location of the skate park, thanks to the city of Terre Haute, and the Vigo County School Corporation Aquatic Center, and Voorhees Park, it stands to reason that the IP property and the Western Tar property, perhaps, could serve a future recreational use. A few years ago, Mayor Bennett worked with Riverscape on a concept for three, fourplexes of baseball, softball fields with movable fences that will allow Terre Haute to host the kind of weekend meets that many of our family, some of you, no doubt, now attend around the state. But Terre Haute doesn't have that kind of headquarters, that kind of facility that can attract that many people. This would be similar to the benefits from the soccer fields down on Spring Hill. Just this last weekend, those soccer fields hosted 90 teams from around the state and an estimated 1,000 people who patronized local restaurants, hotels, and shopping areas. It would have been bigger, but there weren't enough hotel rooms. By the way, the soccer fields are 57 acres, just seven acres shy of the International Paper property. So you can see, if you're going to do something and do it right, you need space. As you see, this complex would use the available space of the IP property, except for an area that could be used for a much-needed quality outdoor tennis facility. Let me, you can see there, with the way this is laid out here, these are the fourplexes, and then these are tennis courts here, and this is the Western Tar property. By the way, the jail, as is designed, would take about this much of this property, leaving this much here of this property. A hotel expert has told us that this kind of use could support location of a hotel on the property or nearby. When the Vigo County Redevelopment Department at our behest acquired the IP property in December, our next step was to pursue an update of development concepts that we need in this community and what the best use of this property could be. This has been delayed by the uncertainty of the jail plans. Certainly, to improve the quality of place and to meet modern recreational needs, a number of potential projects make sense. Our community deserves a modern outdoor water and swimming complex like Splash Island in Plainfield, Rainbow Beach in Vincennes, and other cities. We should have an indoor soccer facility like Bloomington, Lafayette, Granger, Dyer, and of course, Indianapolis. We should also have an indoor hockey ice rink like Bloomington and Evansville. We are lucky to have the indoor tennis bubble at Honey Creek, but it may be approaching the end of its life, and it may be time to upgrade, like Sellersburg, Jasper, and Valparaiso have done with their indoor tennis facilities. Riverscape believes that vacant properties along Purinton Road make great sense for this kind of development. And it's near our retail, hotel, and restaurant complex, across the street from the city park with the skate park due to be expanded, and Aquatic Center, that's visible from I-70 and a short drive along Margaret Avenue from US 41, and Margaret Avenue is scheduled for improvement in a few years in the last phase of that project. Are there challenges? Oh, yeah, just as there were for the Icon Building in Wabashiki. But there is developer interest, we've talked to them. Will this take a while? Sure, just like Wabashiki, nearly 10 years and still expanding. Do we have the resources? There's every reason to believe that there would be private investment in this area along with public investment. The city and the sanitary district invested $125 million on a state-of-the-art sewage disposal plant which removed the last vestige of Terre Haute's smelly reputation. A like amount is about to be invested in the combined sewer overflow project, which will decrease dramatically pollution in the Wabash. When done, the new sewer along the Wabash will allow for extension of the Fairbanks Park Trail all the way to below I-70, where the Indiana Department of Natural Resources owns 206 acres in the oxbow of the river, this side of the river, that you can now only reach it by the river. And the city has plans for conversion of the former settling ponds of International Paper to a passive park and lake surrounded by a trail similar to 500 Maple. Riverscape appreciates the leadership of Mayor Bennett, City Engineer Ennis, and the sanitary district board and their foresight for this project. Some of you have heard references recently to those sewage lagoons, and that's what they were originally going to be, but that decision got changed by the mayor and the sanitary board and Mr. Ennis in 2014, and this is the plan for that area over the hill where the construction is now going on. Of course, we're all aware of the changes in plans by the county to locate the new jail on the IP property. Our board is on record as opposing this. Why? Because of the opportunities we just talked about, especially as our efforts move to the industrial corridor. The basic question must be answered is, is the location of a jail on this property the best use of the property? Is it a use that will encourage or discourage other future development? The Riverscape answer is that there are plenty of sites to build a new jail, but we have very limited acreage that is close to our river. Riverscape has no paid employees. Most of all of our funding has been reinvested in property, with some going for planning services. Our board is a collection of volunteers who are passionate about the vision of Riverscape and the future of our community. We appreciate the financial support, past, present, and future hopefully, of the city of Terre Haute, Vigo County, Indiana State University, the Community Foundation, and scores of individuals, and we promise that we will keep working the plan. Thank you for your attention, and we're happy to now to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Basically, I want to explain how we're going to do this on the special meeting. I'm going to allow people to come up and have any comments or question regarding Riverscape. I know the big elephant in the room is the rezoning that will be coming before the council next month, but there'll be opportunities to be able to address that during our regular meeting and our sunshine meeting next month. So if anybody has any questions or comments regarding the Riverscape or their plans, come up to the microphone, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Thank you. My name is Mike Gordon. My question for Riverscape would be, I attended the commissioners' meeting last time, or week before last. They kind of halfway indicated some flexibility, and then at the end of the meeting, really inflexibility about location of the jail. What would be the impact of the jail at the International Paper site on potential future economic development in that area?
Thank you.
You know, it's a great question, one we wrestle with. The commissioners want to say it won't hurt, it might help. Clearly, though, one thing is sure, they're going to take roughly half of the property. So when you're looking at what you have developed, and we've talked to several developers, none that are ready to take the plunge yet, but getting their ideas and all, the more area we have, the better. We are hopeful that we might be able someday to do a co-development with the Western Tar tracks property south of us. That has been largely remediated, but we don't know that right now. So there are two answers to that question. First of all, it's going to narrow the options of what we can do. For example, those baseball fourplexes, at least as big as we would like to see it to be, wouldn't work on that property there. Some of the other possible developments that people have talked about would not work. The other question is the adverse impact of a jail. It's going to be a great-looking jail, there's no question about that. It'll be the most attractive jail that I think any of us have ever seen. I think the commissioners are very clear about that and are working very hard to make that the case. But still, there are a lot of people that just don't want to be near a jail. Some of it's realistic, some of it's unrealistic, you know, but it is a fact. So it narrows the options of what can be there, if it's on that. If we lived in a community where there wasn't a lot of acreage within the city where this could be done, that would be one thing. Their argument really kind of boils down to, we already own the land. Of course, we remind them, you bought the land at our behest for the purposes we're talking about, and then decided to change your plans and put the jail there, but no matter. But we think it would severely impact our ability to move forward with the future development.
Thank you. Anybody else on the public have any questions or comments regarding this? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ralph Leck. I'm a community person from the community here, just interested in this process. I'd like to say, first of all, thank you for the work you've done, so much work you've done on Riverscape. I've been here since my family moved here in 1990. We love it here. And we've been waiting for some real leadership in this community. It seems like the mayor's been bumbling from one tragedy to another with no real leadership. And the kind of leadership that we see with Riverscape is a real, I don't know, it gives me hope for the community. It does. I don't know what long-term vision we have for this community, but it doesn't seem like the long-term planning has been something that we're particularly adept at in this community. And the one long-term plan that I know of, that I've been very happy about, is Riverscape. And the property was acquired, as far as I know, for the purposes of Riverscape, and now it's been diverted to another process. So let me just express to you my concerns about an openness in this process. The first thing I want to tell you is that when this issue came up and President Thomas in the county council meeting changed the agenda of the meeting to deny people the right to speak on this, I was upset. When I found out that the commissioners had requested that you endorse by rezoning the IP site, I was infuriated. And I was infuriated because we have been, we as the public, those of us who are concerned, have been cut out of this process. They seem to be just pushing an agenda without giving us any alternatives. Could they give us three sites? Nobody ever represents everyone. I know that we can't satisfy everyone in this community, but could they give us alternatives? We don't know what kind of prison they want? That should determine what kind of site. They haven't even determined the number of beds properly. We don't know how much of the facility will be going for mental health. We don't know how much is going to go for drug rehabilitation. Many of those things may not be done on-site, they may be done in a separate facility. They haven't determined that... They haven't determined the design, but they're asking you to push forward with this project, which is bad in terms of its unwillingness to entertain the concerns of the public, and I think even worse, as a degradation, a de-evolution of the kind of community vision that Mr. Nation has provided for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the Riverside project, please?
Hi, my name's Jamie Luna Schatz, and I wanted to say thank you to Riverside for all that you've done for making Terre Haute more beautiful for its residents. I did have a question about the salvage yard. I feel like that's one of the complaints that people have whenever you're driving down south. They think that's an eyesore. So did you guys have any comments on that and how we would handle that?
Well, I wish we could report that it would have a future as the salvage yard did in Dresser because it's gone. And if you haven't noticed, drive over to Dresser and see the disappearance of that salvage yard. The salvage yard, Southwest Auto, has recently changed hands within the last year. We understand that those new owners are also excited by the Riverside plan, and they don't want to be next to a jail. It's amusing to me, but at the same time, it's a sad, sad situation. I don't know whether those folks in that salvage yard would be willing to move, but it sounds like they're not residents of Terre Haute or Vigo County. They are investing in our community, so we want to work with them as we can. It's my understanding that they have interest in beautifying their presence on Prairieton Road. That's good to hear. But it's a salvage yard, and one of the challenges the county has in the future is where do we put salvage yards? So I wish I could report more optimism, but it is what it is, and we'd like to talk to, we'd like for them to join in the plan of Riverside in the future, and it'd be great if that salvage yard were somewhere else.
Mr. President? All right. We're going to go ahead and move inward and start with the council. So Council Nation?
I was going to ask Charlie while he's standing up there to remind us of the salvage yard to the north that's gone across from Woodline Cemetery. There was a longstanding salvage operation there that has disappeared over the course of the last decade. As, I don't think that that was because of Riverside, but I think that it certainly helps. So, you know, those are two of the three that I can think of that are within the Riverside salvage, or rather, project area. Two of the three are gone already, so I think it's not too crazy to think that the third one would eventually go away, too.
Anybody from the council have any questions? Councilman Garrison?
I just wanted to say thank you to Fred and Charlie for the presentation, and every time I see it, it continues to get better, not because of the presenters, but because of the content continues to grow. And thanks for your efforts there. It isn't often that Riverside comes before the city council, but it looks like next month we've got Special Ordinance 202017 zoning 2403 Prairieton Avenue, Prairieton Road. So we will be talking about this next month. And there's a couple of things. I'm by no means a zoning expert, but I don't know if Fred or Charlie can address this, but one of the terms I've heard in the last four weeks or so is the jail zoning and the difference between penitentiary versus open zoning. Would anybody like to, would you like to address that, Fred, for the council?
Well, first of all, we're not experts, we're not lawyers, we're not experts on zoning, but the most important thing is clearly Riverside is against the location of the jail on the property, so it follows we're against the rezoning of it. And we've talked to several of you about that, and we'll be talking some more. We, like, you saw the story in the newspaper this morning, and a little puzzled by what's going on with the direction that the county is moving here. I'm sure a lot of work has gone into that by the county and by your city attorney, too, I would assume, on that. But it seems that the zoning ordinances are pretty clear, that there is a category that's penitentiary. Now, people can argue about the literal definition of penitentiary, but it says, you know, it says right here in black and white, under uses permitted, facilities for the incarceration of persons ordered detained by local, state, or federal officials. Seems like it applies to everyone. So the council in its wisdom addressed this issue a number of years ago. Legislative intent, I don't think is necessarily something that is always important in this, especially when the black and white is pretty clear about what it says. So to go back and say, well, what were we really thinking about, or what were those folks thinking about? I know some of you may have been on the council at the time, if you remember. But black and white, it would certainly seem that if they want to rezone it, they ought to give due consideration to going through the category that is prescribed in the zoning code, or otherwise, why do we have these things?
Thank you, Fred. Ayew.
I had a couple of questions, Fred or Charlie, I don't know who would want to address this. One of the things that I noticed on your PowerPoint was the fact that no, some of your projects didn't have any local tax revenue used for that. So could you kind of explain, I'm a firm believer that government can be an asset to projects like this, but they're not the only people that should enhance it. So what are some of the things that the public can do to get involved to make it so that your projects move forward?
Thank you. That comment about no local tax dollars was about the establishment of the Wabashiki, the 7,000-acre fish and wildlife refuge there. That all came about because, you know, a lot of that was bottomland farmland, lower-value farmland. Federal government no longer wanted to be in the job of ensuring crops in flooded areas. That's why people were farming it, is because if the ground, if a land was flooded, which it might be once, none, once, two, three times a year, the federal government Crop Insurance Program would reimburse the farmers for their seed and their fertilizer. They want to get out of that. So instead, they established a program where for $500 an acre, the farmer can keep the land, but they can no longer farm it. They can use it for hunting, recreation, whatever they want to use it for, stays in the family. So that was the beginning. But in addition to that, under the leadership of Max Miller here of Riverside, we raised the equivalent of another $1,000 an acre from the state from the Heritage Trust, the license plate program, from Nature Conservancy, Wild Turkey, Ducks Unlimited, all these groups who want to see that there's more habitat for wildlife and nature and a cleaner environment, and bought the rest of the property owner's land value out. So that land, pretty much all of it now, is owned completely by the I-N-D-E-R. Now, as far as other support, we have had tax money support. When Riverside started a little over 10 years ago, the Terre Haute City Council, the mayor of Terre Haute appropriated $50,000. The county commissioners, the county council appropriated $50,000. And with that money, there was requests or proposals, and HNTB, one of the largest, most respected planning and construction organizations in the world, got the contract to do the Riverside plan, the Riverside book, the one that we're still following. And the hope was, in years to come, both the city and the county would continue that funding. The city's been unable to do so. The county, most years, has appropriated $50,000 from edict money to Riverside. Virtually all of that money has been plowed back into acquiring land in Dewey Point, case in point, Dresser. A lot of that, we buy and then turn over to the county parks department. We spend money on trails, trail, the upkeep, the construction, getting the right aggregate on it. We have 10 or so miles of trails in there. In addition, we have contracted for planning purposes with landscape planners, architects, as I mentioned during the presentation. So what we're doing is, not only is it proper, it's suited to the area, but it will last, and it will be a good design that will inspire people. And I think if you look at Dewey Point, you'll see that. If you go down to the dresser and look at that little parking lot, you'll see that. And you'll see that when we help AMVETS. We help provide design work for AMVETS to make that building a better-looking facility for our veterans and for what they do over there. So that's what we do with the money. We hope the city council, the mayor gets to a point where you could appropriate some money for us also. Thank you.
Me, too.
He's probably going to correct.
I have to add, no, not a correction, I'm adding to what he said. He indicated the amount of $500 to farmers and a thousand on top of that from other grants and gifts. That was at the beginning. Right now, the price that they're purchasing for the farmland now is a total of the two of them together, IDNR and the Wetland Reserve Program, which is USDA, is around $7,000 an acre. Now, I tell people, that is not the federal government's part of it, tax money going to the farmers. They're actually saving tax, now how can you save federal tax? Have you ever heard of that, saving federal taxes? They're doing it out there. The way they do it, the director of the USDA, federal government agriculture, has said if you can stay in this program and keep the crop insurance money from going to the farmers by taking it out of production, for 10 years, you save money. And we've been at it now 11 years. So we are now saving money in federal monies on the Wabashiki, on the federal portion.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council have any questions or comments? Make a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved that we adjourn, excuse me, adjourned by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilman Garrison, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay. We're going to take a few-minute break. Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It's 6:25 on Tuesday, April 11, 2017. We start off all our regular meetings with a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. It's now to be led by Councilman Azar.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call myself, please.
Councilwoman Oliver. Councilman Azar.
President.
Councilman Crossen.
Here.
Councilman Elliott.
Here.
Councilman Garrison.
Present.
Councilman Morris.
President.
Councilman Nation.
Here.
Sixer present, three are absent.
Thank you. We start off our regular meetings with 30 minutes of comments on non-agenda items. Our agenda is up at the first pew up here, if you'd like to review it. If you would, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Some of us have to work out. We can't be as skinny and sexy as Don Morris, so we have to work at it a little bit. My name's Eddie Bird, I'm with the Terre Haute.
He's not even here to defend himself.
I don't know if that's good or bad. I'm with the Terre Haute Parks Department, Cemetery Department, a citizen of Terre Haute, and a golfer. I'm here today, and I'd like to read through this, and if you have any questions, you guys can ask me or email me or whatever. Just want to talk about the handout I just gave you. In there, there's some breakdowns of the two golf courses, Ray Park and Holman Links. There's also a schedule of our golf outings at Holman and Ray. And then there's a few emails in there from golfers that I received last year in Florida Don to the mayor. I just really want to come here and talk to you about Holman Links and Ray Park. I've heard over and over from the media for the last five years on numbers that are incorrect, and I really, I'm just here to talk a little bit about those numbers. I want to make sure that the public is hearing the correct numbers. I'm just here, I just want to be able to make sure the council has the correct information. I'll give you a little bit of breakdown on that first sheet. The breakdown is for the courses' profit and/or deficit for the last 12 years. The breakdown starts in 2005, and that's the year that the two golf courses budgets were separated from the park budget and went out to separate budgets for Ray and Holman. So what you have is 2005 to 2016. The breakdown for Ray Park is at the top, and it shows the numbers of profit and revenue and expenses. The line total net revenue under expenses is the total for both golf courses for that year. The lines I really want you to look at are the two I highlighted. One is the average combined annual deficit of just over 407,000, that is the 12 years. And then the next one is the highlighted of just over 5 million for that same 12 years. And I think that's what the media is putting out to the public, because I've heard that the golf courses lose 4.2 million. I've heard they lose 3 million annually. You know, I've heard all these different numbers, and when the public hears that, of course, they're going to say, let's close the golf courses. I mean, I would be at the mayor's office the first day I started working here if we were losing $5 million a year. I mean, we wouldn't want to keep the golf courses open if we were losing that much. But that's the two numbers I want to make sure the council knows and that the media actually gives out to the public. Now, I'd just like to really talk to you about a citizen and golfer of Terre Haute. The golf courses are, is a weather permitting activity. That means if this spring, we've had some cold weather, some rain, so the courses really haven't been open. Ray Park's been open most of the time, but the courses are weather permitting, and people need to understand that, you know, sometimes in the spring, we're not making as much money in the springtime because of the weather. Two great families donated property and money for Holman Links and Ray Park. We should be honoring these two families for what they gave this community. We should not be talking about closing or leasing these golf courses, we should be investing in these golf courses. We have two great assets. We hold high school, sectionals, regionals, semi-state golf outings. We have three colleges, Rose, ISU, and St. Mary's, that practice there. Holman Links, two weeks ago, hosted an invite, two weeks ago, on a Saturday and Sunday. It brought in 16 universities from all over the Midwest, 106 golfers, 36 coaches, and 200 to 300 family members. Good news is, we're going to have some more of those coming up this summer. We could also, with a little bit of an investment, we could also have some small professional golf outings at Holman Links. Some of the numbers, I think I gave you guys a few years ago. Non-for-profit groups have several golf outings at Holman or Ray. We estimate somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 is raised for this community to help those in need. Now, that's just an estimate, because we don't go and ask the non-for-profits how much money they make. But I did talk to one group that has kind of a medium golf outing, not a smaller, not a large, but they made $35,000 on their, just their little golf outing that they had. We are right now working with friends of Ray Park to raise money to fix the clubhouse at Ray, which is a great thing for the course. Mike Harding's here today, and he's worked really hard with his group to try to raise some money for that building. Lastly, I just want to say golf is a recreational sport. Lastly, I just want to say golf is a recreational sport. Right on my office door every day I walk in, it says Terre Haute Parks and Recreation. Again, golf is a recreational sport. We have several recreational programs and sports like swimming, mobile recreation, basketball, tennis, pickleball courts, pottery, nature center, and Native American programs. My concern is, is if we're going to, you know, close these golf courses, it is a recreational sport. Are we going to do it to our other programs that do not make money? The Parks Department is here to provide recreational to the public. The Parks Department is not expected to make money, though we try. We sometimes fall well short of that. We try to provide affordable recreation to all citizens, which includes golf. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eddie. Anybody else in the public? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Brad Yucatil, 2705 South 25th Street. I was before the council several months ago, concerned with speeding on South 25th Street and people driving recklessly in the school zone where we had a flashing red light that wasn't ordnanced. I came here to give you an update on the situation. Since then, a little timeline of things, we got it ordnanced, which was great. We called the police out there to come and enforce, as was the opinion of the engineer and the general belief that that was the proper way to help with the speeding problem out of approximately, excuse me, approximately 13 or 14 calls to the police department. They came out twice and then came out and gave us a little plaque thing saying, only turn on the light when crossing students. So it doesn't help with traffic at all anymore. And basically told us to stop calling them, that they had 26 school zones to patrol, and that they were doing the best they could with the two officers, apparently that are the only two that can ticket speeders. A little frustrating, to say the least. And I would venture a guess, though I can't look at ticket locations, that since the other crossing yards we've talked to and ourselves have not seen a single police officer out in their school zones since that ordinance was passed back in December, that there's probably somewhere around zero tickets having been issued in school zones to help curtail these speeding issues. Donna Margaret, they actually put up a speed sign a couple of weeks ago. It was up for a week, gone for like two, three weeks. It actually showed back up a couple of days ago. That is great. You can visually see people slow down at those signs. That was one of the suggestions that I made back early to the council, several months ago. I even got estimates from a company that creates those signs, including versions that have solar panels, so that they don't have to be taken down every week to draw their batteries to charge. In addition, knowing that there was an effort to make all school zones compliant with state and local regulations, me and my wife researched the regulations, visited every school zone, and created for the council a list of all the non-compliances of the, I think there's 26 school zones on here, maybe 28, for your viewing pleasure. So those can be brought to the attention of the engineer if the time hasn't been available for him to investigate them. Think that was about my only concern, other than to also point out the dangers of excessive speeds in school zones, because while it is a safe stopping speed at 20 miles an hour, you can stop in 45 feet, it goes up to, let's see, 75 feet at 30 miles an hour, 120 feet at 40 miles an hour, which is about what most people drive through our school zone. And we purchased a radar gun to track that personally. The other day, my favorite was that I had a, there was a young man, probably 14, riding bike by a, literally right by the 20 mile an hour in the school zone sign, and I clocked the car that passed him doing 48 miles an hour. So only 28 miles over the speed limit. But, and think about some of the numbers, if you would, that, hey, if a police officer was going to a school zone every other day and issuing a single ticket, there should be, what, 15 tickets, 10 minimum on record down at the police department? If this council can find a month with 10 tickets in a school zone, I'll leave you alone until I move out of the area. But I'm pretty sure I got a safe bet on that one. So I just want to let the council and the public know that not only has there been no progress in the safety of the school zones, it seems, but since we can't leave that flashing red light on and actually slow people down during the start and end of the school day, it's actually less safe.
It was the officers that gave us the card.
They came to your house?
No, they came out to our stop, gave us the card, and...
Which said what?
They talked to my wife, and I believe they said that they know that there's an issue and that we don't need to call anymore.
Okay, they were saying that they would take care of it?
I don't know exactly what they...
Usually, police officers will take care of a problem like that.
If you guys, you're more welcome to have that conversation, you know, later on.
Yeah, I would like to speak to you if that happens, okay? Because my son is on the police department. If there's an issue, they will take care of it. Okay? Yeah, I would like to talk to you.
Thank you.
My name is Wendy Bennett, and I live at 4519 Park Lane Court, and I am the managing partner of Starplatz LLC, which invests in rental property in Farrington Grove. We have for the last 30 years. And we've renovated approximately 26, 27 houses there and have maintained them and tried to do a good job maintaining them. And I'm asking for your help. The area is very dark, and I believe that we need a lot more streetlights. And they used to tell me that the infrastructure wasn't there for those lights. But now with the use of LED lights, I think it's possible. And I know that there's a lot of new development and exciting sidewalks and lights going in and other parks of the city. And I'm asking you to help me with the area that is a treasure in our community, these wonderful old houses and these great old neighborhoods, to get some lights there, to keep them safe, to keep people wanting to walk around and live there. And I need your help for that. So whatever you can do to help, get somebody to look into it, work with us. I just represent tons of other investors, too, in the Apartment Association. There's several of us. I'm just the one who came here tonight to talk about this. So I am asking for your help. We really need it, and it's a treasure. And we really need to make it a great neighborhood still and light it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
James Taylor, 1721 South 26th Street. Thank you, Mr. President and the board, for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My concern is with the dance permit requirements that the city has set forward on December the 8th. You guys have already had that, but I'm going to speak on it real quick. The city ordinance for this particular dance event at the moment is set, the insurance is set too high. It's $5 million. I've talked to like 12 different insurance agencies, and they said that $5 million is unheard of. It's unreal. Basically, you would need only about $1 million to secure a dance. Now, as far as the, I know why it was implemented. I've also talked to the Assistant Chief, Sean, on this. Indianapolis, this is, was adopted from an Indianapolis city. So basically, when you look at the demographics, you look at the population, Indianapolis is nearly 900,000 population. Terre Haute, as of 2013, is 61,000. Most of the events that I have, I have less than a percent that actually comes to my events. I'm an entertainer. I love jazz, R&B, blues music. We don't have venues for that in Terre Haute. So therefore, JDT Productions was established in Chicago. I moved back to Terre Haute last year. So it was established to put on events such as this. And it was a nonprofit organization to where I used to give out money to daycares, give out money to the needy. But what this permit does, it stops you, basically financially, it stops you from even having an event, because I have to pay for all the musicians, I have to pay for the venue itself. It's very costly. Now, I did some research on the insurance. Most places that I've talked to, most venues that I had talked to said that I would be covered under their umbrella. And you do not have to have additional insurance to have an event. And so basically, with that said, all I'm asking is that you go back and review the cost. Basically, I did talk to, I don't know if Eddie, the city attorney, is he here? How you doing, Eddie? Pleasure to meet you. I talked to Eddie, and I understood his concern was to protect the city's interests. Well, if I'm not renting the venue from the city, I shouldn't be stuck with the $5 million policy for the city. And if I was renting from the city, and again, I understand the need, my interest is, before this ordinance even came about, I was already doing this. Matter of fact, I canceled a February the 18th show at the Quality Inn, where I've always had shows there since 2002. I canceled a show there just so I could be correct with the city ordinance. Well, I couldn't get insurance. And then you apply for a dance permit. You apply for the dance permit, and then it tells you, well, you know what? Maybe you'll be approved, and maybe you won't be approved. Because basically, that's what's in the language here. So all I'm asking is that the board, you guys, go back over it, reassess this. I had used, and I also asked Detective Tompkins, could I use his name today? He said, sure. Every event that I ever had, I've had Terre Haute policeman, and he has also hired additional security for me. So I never, from 2002 up until this point, never had one issue. My mother's 85 years old, back in the wheelchair. I'm sure most of you do know Margaret Taylor. But these are the type of events that I put on for some of the folks that are 60 and above that are here to support me. I don't put on events with pants hanging down, you know? You could bring in your own bottle. I don't do that. What I put on events for, I usually hire a cater license, you know, cater, for us liquor, anything. So I just want you guys to go back, look over this, see where it could be tweaked, see where it can work for the small guy like me. I work for the bank, you know? One thing that, when I, I was the first one to apply for this permit, and basically, when I went to the city clerk's office, nobody knew what to do. They sent me to the legal department. Get to the legal department. The legal department said, we don't know yet. Nobody's never applied for this. So when I get to the legal department, I'm kind of going through channels. I also talked to Robin Drummy. Is she here? She's not here? Okay. At Eddie's behalf, he did apologize for the mix-up, because this is the first time anybody's ever applied. Now, again, I only applied to be legal with the city. You know, I was told you could have had the dance. I don't operate like that. So all I'm asking is you guys, go back over, let me help you, you help me, and we can help other folks that are trying to have, you know, a good time in the city. Again, we don't have a venue for jazz. And if we do, somebody tell me, you know? So I want to thank you for taking your time. Special thanks to Mr. Devon for always keeping in touch with me.
Mr. Taylor, I had a question for you. How many events do you think you have a year?
I usually do two to three events per year.
Okay. And then you said you had about 60 or less is what normally comes to your venue?
No. I'd say out of the 61,000 population is the number that I'm giving you of Terre Haute, I actually have probably less than a percent that shows up. I mean, we're talking about literally around 100 to 150 people.
Okay. All right.
And it's no sense to have that kind of insurance.
All right. Let me, I just want to clarify one thing with Eddie. And I don't remember the ordinance exact. Were not-for-profits exempt on that? If they have a not-for, if they're doing a function for a not-for-profit?
I think they had to be a fraternal organization somehow registered and bring in documentation.
I can double-check that. If I may, just briefly, on the insurance requirements, and I'll be as fast as I can, you'll see that number come up a lot with a $700,000 per occurrence or per individual with a $5 million aggregate. The reason why I always look for that, whether it's in ordinances or in contracts, that's the maximum tort liability for a municipality in the state of Indiana. So that's maximum coverage to make sure we're entirely safe from any liability from the city's standpoint. So it's always possible that something lower can be negotiated. Generally, once it comes through our office, I will always push for those amounts to make sure we're totally insured.
Is there a minimum?
Minimum, no, there's no minimum requirement.
I know you said there's a maximum, but there's no minimum.
That's the maximum an individual or individuals could sue the city for in a civil claim if something were to happen, if there was a, you know, a massive event, that would occur.
I want to comment on that with due respect to that. Again, this has to be, you would have to change the language in this, because if someone is not using the city property to help hold their event, then there's no need for this. Because under the umbrella that I have spoken with several people who have, you know, ballrooms and things here in Terre Haute, matter of fact, I spoke to the main event yesterday. I spoke with Deborah. And you don't have to have, and she said, told me personally, you don't have to have additional insurance. I cover you under my umbrella. Now, if you're having an event with the city, and I understand the language, it's fine. If that's what the city wants, that's fine. But I'm not using city property for any events, you know? Even if I need to go to the park to have an event, I think it's still a little too high.
And just briefly with that, because the city's issuing a permit, we're putting a stamp of approval on that. So from an attorney's perspective, if something would occur, even though it's not on city property, I think there's some liability that it opens the city up to. Coupled with that, there's, again, a maximum liability that is outstanding if a lawsuit would take place that includes the city as a defendant. And again, that's the reason why we include that high insurance amount. You're correct in thinking, yes, it wouldn't be the main target in an issue like that. But the main goal is when we put these types of things together is to make sure the city's protected to the best of its ability.
And I understand the city being protected. I don't want to go back and forth, but I believe when I spoke with Sean, who actually implemented this, he said that he only asked for a million. You know, a million's reasonable. If you're having less than a couple hundred people at an event, a million's reasonable. I mean, it costs you a couple hundred dollars. $5 million, they will not cover you, period. $5 million, if they wouldn't even cover you, it would still cost you around about $1,1200. $5 million, if they wouldn't even cover you, it would still cost you around about $1,1200, which, what's the use of having a good time? When I say a good time, I cater to people who, as I look at the board, would enjoy coming out to hear me play. I'm a saxophonist. They would love coming out to hear some nice jazz. Thank you. They would love. So, we really need to do something with this. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public would like to speak on non-adjutant items?
My name is Mike Harding. I live on Halliway Lane in southern Vigo County, and I'm president of the Friends of Ray Park. And I just wanted to say very quickly is that our study for Ray Park has been completed. We're going to give it to the park board next Wednesday. I also anticipate that the historic Ray Park clubhouse will be on the agenda for approval by the state Historic Preservation Board, and then maybe in June will be on the National Register. I just want to say, I moved from Evansville, Indiana. I was an eighty-four, went to college, grew up here, and I came back, and I was a grant writer for our school district. What I want to do here is work with the Friends of Ray Park and others around the city so we can return the glory, so to speak, or relight the glow to Ray Park. It's 160 acres right in the middle of town, right across from that new high school that you probably saw, it's going to be built across the street, across from the hospital, and also Once Mr. Village, and that general vicinity. So, maybe sometime, it might be after we talk to the park board, there might be a chance for us to talk to the city council about what Friends of Ray Park has in store. And then, the other thing is, I was in charge of academics for our school system. I had I-Step scores I had to report every year. And during my study for Ray Park, I found out what our health scores were for Vigo County. And you know, one of the things, if you're going to attract business and industry to Vigo County, is you're going to have to have a healthy workforce, clean minds, clean bodies, that type of thing. And as far as obesity, drug use, smoking, inactivity, that type of thing, in 2016, we ranked 91st out of 92 counties. On length of life, 73 out of 92 counties. Quality of life, 76 out of 92 counties. Physical environment, 88 out of 92 counties. Socioeconomic factors, such as educational level, income equality, children living in poverty and such, 85th. Those are numbers that really you guys need to be aware of. And so, I applaud the efforts of Riverside Recreation, and that's what we're going to try to do with Ray Park. Principally, it's not about golf. It's about a park. It's about the health of our community to be able to compete. And I'm back new to the community, we have Rose Holman, that's highly respected internationally, probably. We have Indiana State University. That's a quality institution. I know we've hired a lot of teachers in our school districts in Indiana State. But the thing is, I'm not sure even those fine institutions with our school cooperation can overcome the health, the level of health we have here in Vigo County. So, that's really why we want to redo Ray Park, is for to build our workforce, build our economy, and make Terre Haute more prosperous than it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm up here today because of my sewage.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, that's the stage.
Okay, I'm sure. My name is Ruby Bertlinger, and I am paying $76 on my sewage. I have well water. I cannot be, the water can't be measured, okay? So, I'm charged double what everybody else is charged. They are charged $23.16. I'm charged a matter of $76, which I don't think is right, since I am a one-person home on a fixed income, and I don't think that's right. I think it's a matter of the council or someone to do the math on this and make sure that everybody is treated fairly. And to me, this isn't fair. There are a lot of people that can't pay their sewage bills, and this is another thing. When they don't pay their sewage bill, it's automatically their water is shut off. Then, from the water goes their power. Now, why are all the utilities connected to make it hard on people that way? Why do they shut down their power or have their homes condemned instead of letting these people catch up? This is, I figure a city is a family, and people need to take into account that if they can't afford it at that time, all the prices they put on these people from utilities is making it harder and harder for them to dig their way out, and I don't think it's right. And I think something needs to be done about this. And number one, I want my sewage lowered, and number two, if it can't be lowered, I want to hook up back to my own sewage, which I'm told I can't do that. I have five laws. I don't hurt anybody when it comes to my sewage. My sewage is fine and healthy. There's no reason why I can't hook up to my own sewage, and I would like to do that.
You said you're on a well?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. And you said your bill was $76 a month?
No, it's like 50, I think it went down to like 53.
Okay. And that includes the...
It's double. I don't pay a water bill.
Okay.
I'm on well.
All right.
And how they figure that I can pay twice as much as the city, because when you're on city water, you only pay 23, flat rate. My flat rate is like 56, and that's not right.
Okay.
And this is other people, too. And then, there's a lot of wells that aren't hooked up. Well, you know, I don't want to go out and find these wells and make these people hooked up, because I don't think it's right they should have to to begin with. I fought it for three years and didn't want to hook up to the sewage, but they made me. They condemned my house to make me, and my husband didn't want to fight it because he was a city worker, and he didn't want to go any further with it. Or I would still be fighting about this. I don't think it's fair, and I would rather hook back to my own sewage than to have to go through all this.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Okay. And I do think something needs to be done about the utilities compounding people's troubles by shutting off the power, because that's what they threatened me. I want my sewer shut off, and I told them that. They said, first, I had to shut off my power. Why do I have to shut off my power in order to shut down sewage? And I told them that I was going to rehook to my sewage that I already had before, and they informed me that my house would be condemned, and that's another thing. Why are we paying somebody in Oklahoma for our sewage bills? Why isn't it here in Terre Haute? Why aren't the jobs here in Terre Haute for sewage? I don't understand that. You know, we want jobs here, yet we gave these jobs to someone in Oklahoma, and that's another thing. They made a mistake on my billing. They put the wrong number in my bank. It was their fault. But yet, they charged me for a bounced check, which it wasn't. It was their fault. They read the numbers back to me, and the numbers were right, but they did it when they typed it in. It was a typo. And then, they charged me $5 for whatever it is when you're late, which I shouldn't have been late, but because of the typo, I was late, and it's like a game to them. Sorry, but you owed it. And there's nothing you can do to fight it. They're in Oklahoma, and you can't get anybody here to do something, because they refer you back to Oklahoma. This is crazy. It's just crazy. You know, I just think there's other ways to handle this, and somebody needs to sit down and figure it out.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay. Is something going to be done?
Well, I can refer you to Brad Spideyell.
Okay.
Brad is in charge of billing for the wastewater treatment, and they have a process where you can appeal your bill. I would reach out to him to do that.
Okay. Do you think he'll do something?
Well, I can't speak for Brad. You'll have to call for it ahead and ask him, but I know they have, they've had appeals in the past that they have been able to work some stuff out.
Okay. And I don't want this just done for me. I think the city of Terre Haute needs to do this for everybody. I think they need to stop this silliness of having public service come in and shut you down, and it's just putting people in a big hole, and I don't like that. It's like a, this is a family. Help each other, and the council is here to help us. So, I'll do what I can, and I'll work with Brad, but I want to work for everybody, and that's who I stand, and I'm not very good at this, but I'll get better.
You did good. You did good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Corrections to the journal?
There are none.
Communications?
They're in your packets.
Reports from government agencies? I do have something. There is a vacancy on the animal control board that I'd like to appoint Lauren Kierwack to that, to finish the term that ends in the end of 2018. So, I entertain a motion on that, please.
I'm moving. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Azar that we approve Lauren Kierwack to the animal control board, seconded by Councilman Nation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The point is, first order of business, Michelle, please.
Special Ordinance 12, 2017, resuming property located at 373 North 16th Street, previously tabled to be amended and received a favorable with conditions from area planning.
Potential to speak on this, please.
Yeah, my name's Ron Bendah. I'm representing Marine Corps League Joseph A. Bray detachment. This is a property that we've owned since the 90s, and we're going to continue using it in the same fashion that we traditionally have, only instead of using it ourselves, we're going to rent it out to an entity that would just basically continue doing what we've done. I've talked to a number of the neighbors. They had some concerns. We've addressed those, and I don't think anybody's here to object, so it's a pretty peaceful transition. And if I could get your approval, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
I live in that neighborhood. What are you doing?
Hold on just a second. Would you like to come, I was going to ask if anybody has any questions or comments on this resolution?
I don't know the position.
Okay, yeah, you can come up and ask a question.
I would like to know what exactly is the money. I know that's a really nice property, and they keep it nice and clean. What are you doing?
Essentially, the property is located at 16th and Lee. It's the what you call a commuter pool. We have used that as a warehouse, as a garage facility. What we're going to do is actually rent it to the grandson of the gentleman that we bought the property from. He runs a small business, and he's looking for someplace to be able to park his vehicles off the street. I've talked to the lady that lives right next door. I've talked to the people that live across the street. Believe they came to area planning, and we, any concerns they have, we've addressed, and so...
Well, where did they want to park, on the property or around the street?
The concept is that allows them to park their vehicles indoors. That's why we're renting them the facility. It's a warehouse, garage facility. We currently have vehicles that we park indoors now. Essentially, we would move our vehicles to a different location, and then rent those buildings so that they could park their vehicles inside.
No kind of junkyard.
Pardon me?
It's not like a junkyard.
No, ma'am, it's a, it's a vibe of business. He wants to be able to park his vehicles indoors so that they're not subject to the elements of vandalism and such.
Oh, exactly.
And then, we've also talked about fence that would be compliant with the fence that the neighbor lady has, and we've talked to her about the location of her central air conditioning units, so the fence would not interfere. We've actually gone door to door and tried to make nice ones for everyone.
Well, the only reason I'm concerned is we had that in our neighborhood, and we had to get them out.
And it's not being zoned business. It's actually a planned development, and it's, we originally thought about a business zoning, and next-door neighbors objected to that, so we withdrew that, amended it as we've mentioned, and it's going to be very strict.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to give me your information before we sign the final lease? I pull out if I can.
I don't drive by there, you know?
It's really not going to change.
Yeah.
It was zoned R1 single-family dwelling, and obviously, it's not a single-family dwelling. We're just trying to correct the mistake that was made here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for explaining.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 12, 2017? Counsel?
Where's the amendment? Is it here?
We handed it out last week.
Oh, okay. What exactly did the amendment say?
We went from a commercial zoning classification, I believe it was C5.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, we're doing an R1 plan development, which will be better suited for the neighborhood.
Now, President Nation, answer.
Okay. Fair to that, right.
I make a motion to amend Special Ordinance 12, 2017 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved that we amend Special Ordinance 12, 2017 by Councilman Garrison, seconded by Councilman DeBonne. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Amended.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Michelle.
We're not done yet.
President Nasser, make a motion to approve Special Ordinance 12, 2017 as amended. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Garrison that we approve Special Ordinance 12, 2017 as amended, seconded by Councilman DeBonne. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now you're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Resolution 5, 2017, designating an area commonly identified as 3701 North Fruit Ridge Avenue, Terre Haute, Indiana, as the economic civilization area for the purpose of a 10-year personal property tax abatement. Ampasat, this is for confirmation.
Hi, I'm Heidi Slengard with Wilkerson Law Firm here on behalf of Ampasat. We've talked about this, an application for a 10-year personal property tax abatement pretty extensively last month. I'm more than happy to answer any questions if you'd like, but I don't feel like I have to repeat everything if you're comfortable with the information you've heard already, so just let me know.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on Resolution 5, 2017? Counsel?
President Nasser, it's already been amended, correct? So, we're just approving, or we prove as amended?
I'm sorry, I missed all of that.
It says as amended for confirmation, so...
We amended everything last month.
Okay. I'll make a motion to confirm Resolution 5, 2017 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Garrison that we approve Resolution 5, 2017 as amended, seconded by Councilman Nation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks.
Next order of business, please.
General Order 3, 2017, amending city code changing flashing intersection control beacon at 10th Street and Margaret Avenue.
Potential to speak on this, please.
Mr. President, the council, Chuck Innes, engineer. This doesn't change anything as it exists out there at 10th and Margaret. It just revises the code so the code is consistent with what's existing in the field. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on General Ordinance 3, 2017? Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilman Nation?
Chuck, last week when we discussed this, I had asked about the intersection of 3rd Avenue and North 10th Street.
Yes, sir. I was trying to figure out how I was going to bring that up, but it appears that in 2013, the council revised the code to remove that flashing signal. It just hasn't gotten done yet.
I thought I signed off on some paperwork to...
Yeah, apparently, that one fell through the cracks, so we'll get that. We worked on the change of conditions, which is a form we send off to the street department. We worked on that today, so that should be going out tomorrow at the latest. Back to the street department to have it removed.
Thanks for that. I know it's a little off-topic, but continuing in that same off-topic vein, I think Councilman Garrison had asked also about the one by the former Sacred Heart School.
The same story. We amended both, the code for both of those flashing lights in 2013, so that one never got picked up either. So, I'll talk about it, we'll get it fixed.
Oh, okay.
Sacred Heart is?
Mr. President, if there are no further questions, I move for approval of General Order 3, 2017.
I did have a question real quick, I'm sorry. Speaking to the gentleman that came before us during public comments regarding the speed limit signs that are being put there and moved, what, I mean, what do we, do we buy one, two of those signs? Because I know we used to have the big ones, and then we got those, which I thought were really cool to have, so I don't know why, why we're not leaving them there, I guess.
I'm not sure. The police department purchased those. Actually, they installed them. It was kind of a surprise to us, too, when we saw them out on the... It was kind of a surprise to us, too, when they, when we saw them out on the street. I don't know what their status is, but the police department's basically in charge of those, in charge of traffic. I do have the gentleman's report. I'll go through it. The one comment that seems to be over, well, my first response to what I heard earlier, those red flashing lights are not traffic control, okay? They're for pedestrian crossing only. They're not there to slow down speed. They're not, you know, they're not traffic control devices. They're there for crossing, children only, and that's it. So, if someone's speeding through 25th and Wallace, that's a, that's a police matter as far as, you know, as far as the engineering department is concerned. We ask the police to patrol these areas, but that's, that's their purview.
And I do, I do know that you've made some improvements at that 25th and Wallace intersection. I appreciate it, so I just wanted to ask how that works with the speed limit signs. Councilman Elliott?
Mr. Ennis, I have been told that that light on Wallace is to be turned on when there's someone there that they need to cross and then turned off until the next person comes that needs to cross.
That's true.
Okay. And that is due to like the limited number of people that cross in that morning?
The report, the report we've gotten is that there are five children that cross that street.
Okay.
On any given morning, afternoon.
Okay. And then the other day, when I happened to drive up Brown Avenue towards the school there south of, between Brown and, and Wabash.
Right.
That light was on all the time. And traffic was backed up, 12 or 15 cars. Is that the way that light's supposed to, supposed to work?
They're all supposed to work the same way.
Supposed to work the same way.
Crossing, you know.
Okay.
The, the red flashing light is there to supplement the stop sign that the patrol has with them, okay?
Okay.
So, flip on the red flashing light, you walk in the street, plant the stop sign, kids cross, you get out of the street, turn the light off, and you're done.
Okay. Are the, are the switches or controls convenient?
Yes. They're right, they're right there on the pole, you know, next to the crosswalk.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Any other discussion? It's been moved by Councilman Nation that we approve General Ordinance 3, 2017, second by Councilman Garrison. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thanks, Chuck. Next order of business, please.
Special Ordinance 13, 2017, amending Special Ordinance 23, 2016, as amended, City Hall employee salaries. I was trying to give him a hint.
Just, yeah, call me out. I apologize for, sorry, Chuck Innes, city engineer. Apologize for last week. I'd forgotten that this was, this was mine and for one of the engineering department's employees. This revises the salary ordinance so that, so that it matches the budget. The budget is correct, the salary ordinance was incorrect. This is for our Forrester position. We are dividing his salary among, from two different funds, engineering general and the engineering non-reverting. That's the source of the confusion, but like I said, the budget is correct. We are amending the salary ordinance to match the budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anybody from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 13, 2017? Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilman Nation?
Chuck, we do have somebody in that job now, right?
Yes, we do.
And is it Paul Linderman, is Paul back?
Yes, yes.
How long has he been on the job now?
Six months.
All right, great. Mr. President, if there are no further questions or comments, I move that Special Ordinance 13 be passed as presented.
Second.
It's been moved that we approve Special Ordinance 13, 2017 by Councilman Nation, second by Councilman Garrison. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Next order of business, please.
Special Ordinance 14, 2017, vacating a portion of an east-west public alley located north of 2749 South 3rd Street and 208 and 212 Helen Avenue and south of railroad tracks. No problems were noted.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shaglin. I'm here this evening representing the petitioner with regard to this request. As we discussed last week, this is a thin strip of property that is just south of their current auto dealership and then the lot behind it. We've received no objections. The, the only owners that joined this property is the petitioner and then the railroad tracks. We're requesting this be vacated. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anybody from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 14, 2017? Counsel?
President Nasser, I move to approve Special Ordinance 14, 2017. Secretary?
It's been moved by Councilman Garrison that we approve Special Ordinance 14, 2017, second by Councilman Elliott. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business, please.
Special Ordinance 15, 2017, reserving a property located at 208 through 212 Helen Avenue and a portion of east-west public alley to be vacated that is located north of 2749 South 3rd Street and 208 through 212 Ellen Avenue and south of railroad tracks. Favorable recommendation from area planning.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shaglin. I'm here tonight representing the petitioner. The petitioner would like to rezone the property that is behind Premier Auto Source, that's on 3rd Street, for a extension of their auto dealership. They also would like to rezone the property that you just vacated that runs along that property. It's currently zoned R1, single-family. They'd like to rezone it for the use of the, the auto dealership. I'm not aware of anybody who has contacted their plan office or our office objecting to this rezoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 15, 2017? Counsel?
Motion to approve Special Ordinance 15, 2017 as presented. Secretary?
It's been moved by, that we approve Special Ordinance 15, 2017 by Councilman Garrison, second by Councilman Elliott. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business, please.
Thank you.
Special Ordinance 16, 2017, reserving a property located at 1509 Washington Avenue. Area planning gave a favorable recommendation.
Hello, could you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Brian Holly, representing whole zone installation, and we're trying to rezone that from, I think, R2 to M1.
Is that it?
That's it.
Anybody from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 16, 2017? Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilman Nation?
If there's no further discussion, I move that Special Ordinance number 16 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Nation that we approve Special Ordinance 16, 2017, second by Councilman DeBong. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Special Ordinance 17, 2017, reserving a property located at 4355 East Wabash Avenue. Area planning gave a recommendation of denying, which we will consider unfavorable.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Richard Shaglin. I'm here tonight representing the petitioner. In order, the gentleman before me, too, before me stole my line. I was hoping to say I want to play nice-nice and withdraw this petition, but I guess I have to be second to that, so we'd like to withdraw this.
Move to withdraw.
Thank you very much.
Okay. It's been moved that we withdraw Special Ordinance 17, 2017 by Councilman, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you're right. I, I believe I still should abstain from voting to withdraw, just for the record. Conflict of interest? I, I mean, I.
Being withdrawn.
Okay.
It doesn't matter, you have five.
Okay. I'm, I'm just saying, for the record, I'm.
All right.
Okay.
So we're still good on that? Okay. All right. It's been moved that we withdraw Special Ordinance 17, 2017 by Councilman Azar, second by Councilman Nation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Withdrawn.
Thank you very much.
He needs to state that he is abstaining.
I did abstain.
As you're voting, you're abstaining?
Yes.
Take care.
Thank you, Michelle.
Is it too late to change my vote? I'm just kidding. Okay, good.
There was a member of the prevailing side.
Would you like me to read that?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Special Ordinance 18, 2017, reserving a property located at 771, 781, and 791 North Forty Street. Area planning gave a favorable recommendation.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shaglin. I'm here tonight representing the petitioner, Lily Grace LLC. Lily Grace would like to rezone the property they own at this location from R1, single-family, to an R2, family residential district. The purpose of this is to build a duplex on this location. As you've heard, area plan gave a favorable recommendation. They did have some stipulations, one which is a detailed site plan, which I have provided this evening, and then of course, to just follow city code, state code, national code with regard to the, the property. This currently is a vacant piece of property. Our office nor is area plan received any contacts in opposition to this. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 18, 2017? Counsel?
President Nasser, I move to approve Special Ordinance 18, 2017 as presented. Secretary?
Discussion. Um, Richard, we briefly discussed last week that this is for a daycare.
That's correct.
And I see from your detailed site plan that you'll be providing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 12 parking spaces for that daycare.
That's correct.
And if this daycare does not materialize, I think last week you told us that they put up some walls and it would become a couple of apartments.
Yeah, if you look at the site plan, it's a matter of putting up two or three walls in each unit and all of a sudden it's a two-bedroom duplex.
Two-bedroom duplex with 12 parking spaces, including two handicap unit, two handicap spaces.
That's correct.
This is a residential zoning that you're rece, that you're seeking?
That's correct.
And it's a commercial, it's expressly for a commercial business?
It's expressly for a licensed daycare.
Mm-hmm. I'll be voting against this because I just think that it's an abuse of, of a loophole that exists in our code as it's written. I understand that we are a, a, a city, a state, a country of law, and I understand that under the law, as it's written, Mr. Shaglin has the, the right, and his clients have the right to ask for this, but I don't think that in my mind, that this is the way that our code is intended to be used in siding daycares. And hopefully there'll be tweaks to our code that'll prevent this kind of abuse in the future. I yield.
It is a motion to approve Special Ordinance 18, 2017 by Councilman Garrison, second by Councilman DeBong. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Resolution 8, 2017, designating an area commonly identified as 4150 East Stilton Avenue, Terre Haute, Indiana, is an economic revitalization area for the purpose of a 10-year real property tax abatement. This is for adoption.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Jeff Lind, Lind Law Firm, here on behalf of Pyrolix. This 10-year real property tax payment we're talking about now, one thing I failed to mention last week is that the employee benefits offered by this company are rather generous, and I'll just tick them off a little bit. Pay time off accrued with years with the company, a 401K with 100% employer match up to 4% of the gross pay once they've qualified, medical, dental, vision insurance, company would pay 100% of the premium for the employee, 85% of the premium for the dependents, disability insurance at 60% of earnings for qualified events, life insurance, accidental death and dismemberment equal to one year of annual salary or pay. And I'm sorry for having failed mentioning that last week. You don't, I haven't seen those kinds of benefits very often. Happy to answer any questions from either you or the public.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special, excuse me, on Resolution 8, 2017? Counsel?
President Nasser.
Councilman Garrison.
I can make a motion to adopt Resolution 8, 2017 as presented. Second.
It's been moved that we approve Resolution 8, 2017 by Councilman Garrison, second by Councilman Nation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business, please.
Resolution 9, 2017, designating an area commonly identified as 4150 East Stilton Avenue, Terre Haute, Indiana, is an economic revitalization area for the purpose of a 10-year personal property tax abatement. This is also for adoption.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Jeff Lind, Lind Law Firm, again here on behalf of Pyrolix. Again, this is $22,500 of personal property investment on the north side of Terre Haute.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Resolution 9, 2017? Counsel?
President Nasser.
Councilman Garrison.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 9, 2017 as presented. Second.
It's been moved that we approve Resolution 9, 2017 by Councilman Garrison, second by Councilman Nation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I put, amongst the next three items you've listed on your agenda are tax abatements that I represent the property owners. Am I going to, is this, do we have to come back? Is that why they're on here?
This is the first step. The first step is to say in substantial compliance or not in substantial compliance. If they're found to be not in substantial compliance, any hearing would be held.
And will I be able to speak?
This is the first step. The first step is to say in substantial compliance or not in substantial compliance. If they're found to be not in substantial compliance, any hearing would be held.
And will I be able to speak? Are you, will you be having an open discussion about these things? Because I corresponded...
Normally...
I corresponded with a city attorney and the president of the council on one issue and the city attorney on another, and I don't know if those are your issues.
We have this correspondence.
I guess if you're going to find it not in substantial compliance, then you could...
Correct. Next order of business, Michelle, please.
Fox Hotel Partners, formerly known as Sycamore Hotel Partners, CF One Form for Resolution Twelve, two thousand fifteen. This project is not completed. I believe you received correspondence from Mr. Lind. They did fill out a form, so the council needs to say in substantial compliance or not in substantial compliance. This was originally passed at the end, I think, of two thousand fifteen, and they have stated that the project start date is going to be delayed, or the completion date's being delayed. So, they really do not have any actual employees. So, it's a technicality. The abatement's not been applied, so there's nothing to rescind, even if you find them not in substantial compliance.
This is Fox?
Yeah.
The assessment of the tax payment does not begin until the properties, the improvements have been built and it's been assessed. So, this sense, essentially, the ten years will just delay until it's actually assessed, and there aren't, the value's not there to be assessed.
A tax abatement cannot be applied until there is an increase in assessed value. Whatever the increase in assessed value from the original assessment to the new assessment is what the abatement is applied towards. So, since there's...
But only, only on real property improvements, not on the land.
And so, since there's been no improvements, there's been no reassessment, there's, so the abatement will not be extended. It will still only be allowed to be applied for ten years. It just hasn't started yet.
Any questions?
Yeah. So, what are we voting on?
In substantial compliance.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
I move that we find Fox Hotel Partners LLC in substantial compliance for, let's see, I need to call out the actual piece of...
Resolution Twelve.
For their CF One for Resolution Twelve, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
All right. There goes that one. It's been moved that we find Fox Hotel Partners, Sycamore Hotel Partners, CF One Form for Resolution Twelve, two thousand fifteen, in substantial compliance by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Garrison. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next order of business, please.
LIHDC Redevelopment Warren Village Two, CF One Form for Resolution Fourteen, two thousand sixteen. This is the same situation. Construction has not been completed, but they filled out a form and submitted it. The letters I send out, I don't know if Councilman Garrison remembers, years ago, he had, the council started having meetings on tax abatements, and it was asked that I send out courtesy letters. There's no requirement. I just send them out. In the courtesy letter, I state, "Send a letter in if your construction's not completed." Some send in letters, some send in actual forms. So, you have a form before you for a project that is not completed. So, in substantial compliance?
Because it hasn't, it hasn't been completed, it hasn't...
We just passed, you guys just passed it last year, and they're not even closed.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
I move that we find LIHDC Redevelopment in substantial compliance for Resolution Fourteen, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
It's been moved that we find LIHDC Warren Village Two for Resolution Fourteen, two thousand sixteen, in substantial compliance by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Garrison. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business, please.
Sycamore Hotel Partners, CF One Form for Resolution Three, two thousand ten. This project was completed years ago, and the company is operational. You will see in Section Three, as estimated on the original S B one, they started with no employees, and they estimated they would have twenty-four. They're showing actually that they have thirty-two. Again, in substantial compliance or not in substantial compliance.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
I move that we find Sycamore Hotel Partners in substantial compliance for Resolution Number Three, two thousand ten.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Garrison, that we find Sycamore Hotel Partners CF One Form for Resolution Three, two thousand ten, in substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Motion carries.
One, just one question, if I may. On these two that haven't even started yet, did you say that they could have just sent a letter stating they haven't started yet?
My courtesy letter states that if you have anything to describe, if construction hasn't started...
So, basically, they didn't even have to fill out the script? Because they didn't start?
It's a catch-22 because you guys could technically rescind it? I mean, it's just a catch-22 because technically, you could rescind it because the, they're not showing that they're in compliance. So, if the construction's going to take four years, they're going to be allowed a CF One Form for four years, showing construction's not completed, then they'll file a form for ten years after construction is completed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
Just to continue that vein just a little bit, I'd remind the council that the things that we've asked Michelle to do over the years are all in the name of better communication with the people who have been dealing with these abatements. I think that it's actually a positive thing that she's getting responses from these groups. Otherwise, we would be sitting here wondering or debating whether or not they should have filed a form at all. You know, at least in this case, we have something. And the other, the other thing is that there are often questions about when these abatements actually begin, and more importantly, when they end. And I think that having this improved communication that we're experiencing helps not only establish a paper trail, but it also helps establish in the minds of the petitioners who are making these decisions whether or not to communicate with us, whether or not, how many zeros to put on their forms, all that stuff. This, this all helps. I mean, I know it seems kind of confusing, but this is the process that we're supposed to be administering, and I think that Michelle's doing a great job, and I thank the rest of the council for your patience.
Compared to two thousand ten, I believe, is when we, or two thousand nine, we really started in depth, the amount of paperwork people are actually filing has tripled. So, we're now being tons of paperwork, but that's better than we were in the beginning. And I'm not ready for publication yet, but I have been working with the auditor and the assessor's office to enter in my spreadsheet the beginning year of the abatements.
That's important.
It's, it's a lot of backtracking, a lot of work. So, we are trying to update that so that I know to take them off my list, because I think it's been Stonehouse Farms. We've had a lot of discussions the last years.
Have they filed again this year?
I didn't send them a letter because I was, I'm like, you shouldn't be getting it, so. New business?
Yes, please.
General Ordinance Four, two thousand seventeen, amending City Code, Chapter Eight, changing four-way stop intersection to two-way stop intersection at Barber Avenue and Thirteenth Street.
Traffic.
Special Ordinance Nineteen, two thousand seventeen, rezoning of property located at nine twenty-one, nine twenty-five, nine twenty-seven, nine twenty-nine, nine thirty-one, nine thirty-three, nine thirty-seven, nine thirty-nine, one thousand one, one thousand nine, one thousand eleven, and ten seventeen North Sixth Street, and six twenty-two, six twenty-six, six twenty-eight, six thirty-two, six thirty-six, six forty-four, and six fifty Lafayette Avenue.
Zoning.
Special Ordinance Twenty...
You repeat that, please.
Special Ordinance Twenty Two, two thousand seventeen, rezoning of property located at twenty-four oh three Perriton Road.
Zoning.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved that we adjourn by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilman Nation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn.